Okay, I will call this regular meeting of the Public Site and Building Commission to order at 7:02. You'll join me in the pledge. Let's start it.
To the flag, the United States of America. For the Republic which stands one nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
What's running this guy?
That, no, that's.
Condensing or something. Sound.
Kind of going on and off. So obviously power doesn't blow out. We're hearing noises. We hear noises in our head. Okay, so I'm assuming no public input or correspondence since everybody is part of the team here. So first we will do the meeting minutes. So I will make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of our regular meeting of July 10, 2024. Got a second?
I'll second that.
David did right before you did, John.
All right.
David Morvath.
Thanks.
And any updates, questions, et cetera? I'm the one that did the minutes, so if I made mistakes, let me know. We're all good? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. And I think David Olson has to abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, good. So we'll move right into our old business. We'll start with the firing range. Couple of items that I have. And then we'll see if Mark has anything for us. So I did ask, I followed up with the building official, Chris Baldwin. I had emailed him a couple of weeks ago and hadn't heard anything. So he said he had gone through all the paperwork. Things were looking good. He wasn't completely finished with paperwork yet, with his own paperwork yet. And it looked, kind of looked good all the way around. So we're just waiting to hear from more specifics. If he's got paperwork he has to fill out or something like that. I don't really know. And that Laura had looked at things too. There have been no questions, which I think is good, that, that all the questions that they had initially, I think, were answered when the final report from commissioning CES got posted and given to them to review. So that's moving forward there. I know we had some questions at the last meeting about the makeup air unit and having it run in a more automatic mode rather than having alarms. And so this was a discussion, I remember, you know, Kathy, John Perna had mentioned that a while back, that there should be a list of people who got an alarm if the, something was not working right. And the way to make a, make a very, the controls are set now is that there's an alarm that gets sent if the temperature gets too low or too high. And whoever gets the alarm is supposed to make sure somebody goes down there and kicks the unit out. That's not what we, not what I believe and so others believe we asked for. And one of the things that I had a discussion with Lieutenant Liverini last month in looking at the, the filters, which apparently are very expensive. If that unit's kicking on and off on its own with set points, high and low set points. Everything's still going through the filters. So if the filters need to be changed more frequently, and now that you mentioned it at the last meeting, when we talked about more, less expensive to change filters than to have to have either equipment ruined or sprinklers or anything go. If we don't have, somebody just doesn't get the alarm or it's, somebody doesn't run down and kick the unit out. So Evan had started looking into with the ESC, what would be the best way to approach this? And then, I don't know, Mark, I think you. I.
All right. Where's, where's Dee?
Uh, so back downstairs, take a left.
Okay.
All the way down to the end of the hall.
Okay.
Next, way over there.
All right.
Okay, so Mark, I don't know if you found out anything more with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I have. I talked to Rob Crosston from ESC Controls.
Yep.
And we, we discussed an option of having the, they were having the system run automatically as we had discussed months and months ago. And I don't understand why the engineers didn't call that out in their, their specification, because I think they were on that call. Anyway. And I've asked him to give us some information on what it would cost to have them re-install those controls the way we want them. Because I didn't want to give them direction to go ahead and do it and then see a change order that would be a surprise to the committee. So I asked him to do that. He hasn't gotten back to me yet, but we are looking into that and the whole idea of, you know, putting in different hardwired points and having it jump on the interface is probably the most cost effective way to do it. So I wanted to know what that was going to cost and I was hoping I would be able to report that to the committee this evening. But he hasn't gotten back to me since Monday. So unfortunately, I don't have that information for you.
All right.
But we are working on it. And I would have had Evan do this, but unfortunately, he was in the hospital last week with diverticulitis. So he's, he's been laid up for a little while. So.
I hope it gets better quickly. So David.
Yeah, Mark, something like really blowing my head up right now. So number one, there's already humidity sensors in there and temperature sensors, correct?
Yes.
Okay, it's a simple reprogramming. It should take them all 20 minutes. I don't want to hear it's going to take extra sensors and all that shit. I've been doing this for 35 years.
Sure.
Nope. Okay. It's not as simple. Go in, set your high limit, light setback, low limit, night setback. It's a very simple programming thing. And if they can't do it in an hour, then we need to find another company that can do our controls because it is that simplistic and I could probably do it myself.
Okay.
Wasn't that supposed to be? It was, yes, we shouldn't be charged for it.
Right.
Because we brought it up, like Mark, you brought up, you know, and I appreciate the last meeting, as you brought that all up, we haven't talked about it at great length.
Yes.
Yeah, and we're not, we're not, we're not, you know, ESC, I'm not impressed with, I'm sorry, I don't know now, but I'm not impressed with them. And I'm like, really ticked right now because that is such a simplistic thing. And if they throw us, we have to wire points, we need to get rid of them. We need to get rid of them. And I know they do all the schools and stuff, but that's ridiculous. It is a simplistic thing that they could log in remotely and put these points in right off the thermite and the humidity sensor that it reaches this X, it goes into alarm. You send an alarm out, but you turn the damn unit on and then you bring it down to whatever percentage or temperature, up or down, you needed to, and then it shuts it back off.
So, so my question would be, you know, is there, if we had this discussion, I believe we did, because Mark, if you're remembering it.
I do.
And Dave and maybe even John Perna was there. And that was months ago.
It was.
Before the unit was even installed, before ESC started working on the controls, et cetera.
And I believe the architect and engineer were on that call as well.
You are correct, Mark.
Yes. And so if we discussed it, then, then would it possibly be in the ESC proposal? I haven't gone back and looked at that, but I'll have to.
Yeah, well, that, yeah, that could have been something that was missed.
I can go back and look at that and see if that was in their scope of services.
Even if it's a miss and say we all missed it, that's fine. That's whatever. Stuff happens.
I mean, honestly, I mean, he did not say it was going to cost anything to do. But I assumed that, and I want to be cautious, rather than tell you it's, it's a no cost for them to go out and reprogram it or run additional hardwired points. I just wanted to be cautious about it and not proceed without, and have you guys, and agreed to some kind of change that you guys are not prepared for. So.
I appreciate that, Mark. I really do. But that's something, in all honesty, they can log in and bang that out in less than a half an hour. Okay. Costs us, you know, 100.
Rob about that and see if he can do that remotely as you suggested. Again, my apologies. I'm an architect, not an engineer. So I, I could be wrong. And I don't want to give you guys the wrong information.
No, and I appreciate it. And, you know, you bringing it up. But like I said, I mean, again, they do all our school systems. They do everything. So, you know, this is, hey, we talked about it. Maybe it wasn't in the design drawings or something, but this is like half an hour job to program this, like login remotely. And I know they do it because I remember Bob telling me all the time that they would log in remotely and do things. So you can log in and it's a 10 minute, like, it's literally, select your high and low points, turn things on and off. It's so simplistic.
I mean, his question is, do they want to disconnect the back net interface from the Aon unit to the Action Target system? And instead have us interface the unit into the BMS? This is certainly possible on our end, but I'm not sure that will cause any issues with the Action Target system if it loses communications to the unit. That's specifically what he asked.
But how are they controlling the units now?
Through backnet, correct?
Yes.
Well, then that doesn't make any sense to me because if you're already connected to the unit with backnet, it's already speaking to the units, communicating. So.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, I would assume so. Again.
Really fishy to me.
So, so Mark, is Rob talking about? Because it's two, we have the two different buildings, so to speak. We have the main building and then we have the range.
Right.
And is Rob talking about whatever's going on in the range interfering with what's going on in the main building? It shouldn't, no. Or should you want Dave, maybe you include Dave on an email so that he can help you negotiate through?
You know, I think, why don't we do that, Dave? If you don't mind, let me see you on the emails.
And John Perna, please, as well.
If you don't mind. So that's.
I'd love his input as well.
Yeah, you can include Perna too, because they both know the.
Sure.
Uh, building system stuff.
Sure. I would, I would appreciate that as well.
Nah, yeah.
Not just HVAC, but, you know, whole building running stuff. Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
But as far as I know, that's the only outstanding issue that we have pending the fire marshal, excuse me, the building officials' final approval of the certificate of occupancy. So.
And Downs Construction also offered any help that we would need if the building official has questions. Because they're working with Action Target on two other projects in Connecticut.
I hope they're having as much fun as we did.
Yeah. This setup a little bit differently. We asked them some questions about that. But we had sort of a, an exit interview, myself and the chief with Downs on, you know, how did things go? What would you suggest? And, you know, basically things went well, except that can target. So. And it was fully the communication with Action Target. I mean, their equipment's great. They, what they designed, what they installed, everything's great. It's just the communication and the coordination. It was coordinating, you know, letting us know when they were going to come. And then they show up three days early or five days late and we don't even hear about it. So that, just that issue. And, and I think with the other two projects, they are subcontractors to Downs. So it makes it a little easier for Downs to coordinate.
Sure.
So as far as, you're right, Mark, there's not, there's not much, I can't think of anything else outstanding unless Lieutenant Dragan has anything that's come up. But we do have a few invoices that we are still waiting for. We have one we'll deal with tonight, one we'll do when we get the CO. And then we still, I think, have outstanding invoices from ESC and CES, I believe are the only outstanding ones that we have. Yes. So that shouldn't, and I believe within the next week or definitely by the next meeting, we should have our CO, we should be able to take care of that. Does anybody have anything else? Or we can do invoices. I didn't do a budget report because it hasn't changed, changed, except for now it will with this invoice.
Right. So I haven't updated, I haven't had Evan update the budget tracking invoice because we haven't seen any. So have it on my screen if you need me to share it, but.
I don't think so. It's anybody, it's still about 35, 3600, right?
Right.
Yeah. And, oh, Action Target, that's another invoice we're still, so we're waiting for invoices, CES, ESC, Action Target. And we have the Downs one here that we'll do probably next meeting. And then the one I have here is an updated corrected STV invoice for their final amount.
Yeah.
So.
Closes us out, but, but if you guys want to hold on that for another session, that's fine with me. But I just wanted to get it in front of you and show that that's our, our final invoice on the project. And like I said, last time we met, myself and Evan will be here to help you guys if anything else comes up.
Your practice. So want to do this or?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we approve STV invoice number 90031566. Dated July 18th, 2024, updated for services from, pretty much this whole year. So the end of December 2023 through May of 2024, in the amount of $3,632.50.
Second?
So we got a second. Any questions, et cetera, on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're done with that. Okay, thank you. And any other comments, questions, or anything on the range that anybody has before we move on to our next agenda item? Good, 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 good. Okay. Um, so next on the agenda, or tell me if I'm, I'm going by memory, is the school renovation projects. And I don't have much in the way of updates there. Dr. Carver's away. Jen said that audit is continuing. That's in, in somebody by Bob. In, in the Office of School Construction doing their thing. And it could be a month, it could be six months. They haven't pushed any other questions forward. So all the questions that they had were answered. We'll see where we go with that. So Mark, I don't know if you're, you had given us a Johnson invoice, STV had given us a Johnson invoice last month, which was incorrect. And because of the final amount and you were gonna, that updated. Are you waiting on that until?
I'm waiting on that until I have Geraldine's time in and that'll, that'll come probably for next session.
Okay.
And then, as I mentioned last time we spoke, I would need a change, I need to send you a change order for Johnson from the level spreader. It's only, I think it's $1,800, to be honest, so not a whole lot of money. But we still have money remaining on Rockwell and that where, that's the reserve we kept in place for Geraldine's time to help with the audit. And so far she's only spent four hours on it. So we should be good unless, you know, and honestly, we're okay holding out on sending those invoices until, first off, I want to give you guys a change order. That's the proper order. And I apologize, I wanted to get that to you this week. I just have not had time. And as for Rockwell, I'm not going to bill you until I, until Geraldine's done. So.
Okay. So if you get that change order, we can do it. Then, you know, we can look at it the next meeting.
Yes.
Yep. And then.
I mean, I had most of it written. I just didn't get it signed by my boss. So.
Well, and then you'll have to get it to me and we'll have to get it signed by sitting right here. So, and I know that one of the things that that Dr. Carver and Terry Jansky and Geraldine spent a little time on was a possibility of being reimbursed for change orders that originally they said they weren't going to reimburse us for. So that information got put together and is off to the Office of School Construction. And well, it's a wait and see again with that. So.
We can get more money back from this.
Yes, that would be great. That would be great. So always a good thing. But again, it's a wait and see because they're doing their internal process. So you'll see about getting the change order for us for the next meeting.
We'll do it.
And, and I think that's it on schools unless anybody else has a budget is really pretty much the same, except for when we do a few more STV invoices. We can take care of that and get another, we're still, I think, 700,000 in contingency. So that remains a good thing. Okay. Anybody else have any questions on schools, et cetera? Who? Good. So now we can move along to the high school HVAC. Is that next, Cap? All right. The only update I got from Jen was Jen Vareal was that there were several contractors, didn't have names, that showed up at the optional walkthrough last week. Bids are due beginning of August and there's not much more than that. So we'll have to see where that goes. And again, I don't know if there's a procurement committee. I don't believe that the for the day of the procurement committee to meet, because that would be the day that the bids come in. You raised your hand too.
That was my finger.
So if I've been, if I can offer this, the bids are due, I believe it's Monday, August 5th at 8:15 in the morning and they're supposed to be opened at 8:30 AM.
Yeah.
I did attend the walkthrough just to see what was going on, if it was any different than the prior project that I walked last year. And, you know, the only question we have is really for procurement, because they're asking for a bid bond for the, for the owner's rep, which is not common. So that's the only thing I have. But project appears to be getting ready to go.
Yeah. Well, hopefully we'll get more, I'm coming back on, so hopefully we'll get more bids than we did last time. So, Brian, thank you. So you were, Mark, you're saying you went, you went or someone for us?
I went.
You went, okay. And there were others there too?
Um, there were several contractors and I didn't think there was any other OPMs there but me. So.
Okay. Okay.
I would assume Colliers would, would bid on this job as well as us, but I, I don't know.
Yeah. I don't know either.
There's a lot of high school, of K through 12 HVAC projects coming out for the public bid process. We've got five of them on our, on our radar right now. So there, there's a lot of HVAC money coming out.
Yeah. And if you look at how many, you know, received grants, et cetera, everybody's trying to get the work done. So.
Right. The plan is, everybody's plan is to get the work done by the end of next summer, which I think is, is rather aggressive and, and depending on the scope, it's, you got to get creative with how you do the work.
Right.
Especially if you have abatement.
And it has to be done by the end of December, the end of the year. But I think people are going to try to do, you know, they need to do the kind of work that needs, you know, busting through stuff or whatever. They're going to try to do it in the summer, next summer.
Right.
Yeah.
The one thing that we saw too is in the RFP, the project is scheduled to be finished before the end of next summer, which kind of flies in contrast with what Dr. Carver said. So they're, they're going to get bids to complete the project by the end of next summer. And there may be inherent change orders if it, it doesn't finish by then.
Right. Every contractor. Yeah. Well, and I think that there could possibly be, as people put bids in, some sort of language saying there's a possibility that we may need an extension. So I mean, if they know, if the contractors know that end of December is the grant time, they may mention something. We'll see. We will see. So if, if, if you want to know when the bids will be open, that's at a procurement committee meeting. The procurement committee agenda will be posted at the town website. I was just going to look at, at that to see if there was anything.
Well, the request for proposals says specifically that the all bids will be opened at 8:30 on Monday, the 5th.
So that would probably be when the procurement committee will have their meeting, but I don't know if they, when I was trying to look for it before it kicked me off the meeting. So now I'm looking as I can do vote. Eight, yeah. So there is a procurement committee meeting, special meeting for August 5th at 8:30. And that's for the bid opening. It's part of the process of, in the only items on the agenda are HVAC upgrades and owner's rep. So that'll happen. It says special meeting and only by Google, but it doesn't say where. It doesn't say any place in the building. So I'll have to find out about that if people want to come here and hang out. But I think it may only be by Google meets and there's a Google meets link out there. Okay. All right. So thanks, Mark. And now I think we can move on to the locker room.
You don't need me. I will step away. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Mark.
You, Mark. Really appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Take care. Okay, so now locker rooms. So was it two weeks ago? I think Roy and John and Rachel met with Peter Eckert over at
716.
Their office. That was last week. So what do you got?
So, and Rachel, please jump in here anytime. We had a meeting, a very, I thought a very productive meeting with Peter, myself, Rachel and Roy. And we talked about a lot of things. And one of the things that we, that Peter did, he kind of took the original plan and oversketched it and we came up with, which I'll pass out to everyone, a tentative sketch of what we want to do here.
For people on the screen.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's unfortunate. So looking at where it says Architect Guild will start off there. That's the hallway in front.
Hold on, Rachel, she's trying to.
Oh, there you are.
I can't unmute her either.
Can't hear you, Rachel, and it won't unmute.
I can't unmute you. You have to unmute yourself. Do you have a microphone at the bottom of your screen? A little microphone button?
Oh, now you're sideways. If it's your phone, it might be star six.
Nope, nope.
Nope. Nope. Trying to turn the camera off.
Oh, Rachel.
Isn't technology wonderful?
It doesn't work.
Okay.
Jen.
She'll come back.
So on the bottom.
Just wait, wait a minute, see if she comes back. You can start and then we can go over and make sure that, go ahead.
So on the bottom, one of the things that we decided, we all thought would be the best interest of, this is all part of the project in that hallway is to set up a new set of windows. Rachel, you there?
Can you hear me now?
Ah, yes. Okay. Going to go over some things and please jump in anytime in case. We have, with that meeting, we have Peter, myself. Yep. So on the bottom, you know, those windows are not energy efficient whatsoever. They've been talked about for years to get them changed out. And we, we all agreed that maybe this is the time to do it as part of the project. Is, and they, he has my deep redesigning of the windows to kind of look more like the rest of the building. And then the hallway itself, continuing that flooring that is in the other part.
Yep.
Walls. The only thing that we would not be able to do is like all the sprinkler piping, that would have to remain, but we could probably box the main pipe in and, and, and probably like in there.
Well, the sprinkler pipes are exposed now anyways, right?
Not in the new, done section, they bury them.
Yes, because they could. Yeah.
So going back into the building here, you cut a hallway in where it says P and R, P and R on both sides, they are storage rooms.
Yeah.
The electric storage room doesn't get touched, doesn't get changed.
Okay.
The storage rooms would be for park or rec storage. Basically, you know, just cement floor, block walls and moving on. Going up further, there's a hallway that would go to where the men's and women's room would be there. Now, the hallway extends out to, through one of the old coaches' office that would go right into the gymnasium. And that hallway where, where across the men's room goes down, those double doors would be able to be shut and locked when they have little kids programmed in the gym. So they don't, they can. When they have little kids programmed in the gym, so they don't, they can go to the bathrooms without going out and they all ain't getting lost.
Right.
So, and in men's and women's room, uh Pete said they can be flipped around. Depending on the size needs, we're gonna need more room for the ladies' room, he said, but that's basically laid out in those two locations.
Cause that whole, this is the whole plumbing wall here.
Yes, the plumbing wall, that's.
So it stays, they stay on the plumbing wall, we don't have to worry about jackhammering up the floor.
You go behind that and actually it was a pretty good idea, I think it was Rachel's idea, I think I have credit for this one. Uh, where the men's locker room was before, is to take that and open it up entirely. There was that one little room that comes off the stage for a storage room.
Yeah.
Is to eliminate that. On the stage.
Is that the the one that comes in from the stage?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So this would allow multipurpose room and there's that little jag there, that would be one of those curtains to go across. So this is something that, and and a good point was this, these rooms can be either one large room. Or you can use it for two different programs, events, or meeting space, right? There'll be a double door set there, that back hallway, and you see where the ramp goes up, so that's where that double door would be. The other storage rooms, the old um locker room, men's, I think it was the men's locker room, uh coach. That would be turned into, you know, versus P and R, that would be storage, and the big one, which is still there is is storage.
Okay.
So, actually, there is gonna be. Some destruction, the destruction of walls, but the 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 obviously multipurpose room would have a nicer floor in it. The storage rooms would be just cement floors, you don't need new for storage.
Yeah, but if they're tile already and they have to, you know.
Well, that's.
Maybe you maybe you use something like they used down in the senior center, have you been down there? Yeah, it's an epoxy, just some board epoxy, yeah.
Epoxy, yeah, that's a possibility too.
Yeah.
Is there any issue with tiles?
They, it was, we did, uh, we checked for.
We did testing a lot ago, we could do it again, just to make sure.
If they're not nine by nine tiles, they're not asbestos.
Right, well, not asbestos, but um mastic.
That was all tested.
That was all tested.
We do have the reason, all that testing results.
Yeah, and I, there's some, it's somewhere we can.
So, and and this is again, this is something, it's a it's a different concept from the very original one and the second one. I think this is more, and I think Rachel will agree, this is actually sort of a lot of us heard, it it's more.
It's more user friendly.
Yeah, for the whole town and not just.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so the, and then, because the locker rooms were on either side of that plumbing wall. And they were, they were huge, as I've said last time. When Rachel and I met there, I don't know, a couple of months ago, we just sat in the men's locker room and looked at each other and said, why do we need this huge space? You can see where all the lockers were at one point, but we're not gonna have lockers.
So the the other thing here, this, the whole square footage is about fifty four hundred square feet. And, you know, a rough, a rough estimate to do this, again, this is a. Very rough ten thousand foot snapshot of an estimate, um, based upon the question, looking at about one point three million.
Wow, it says one two one seven, man.
Five by two.
Okay, got it, why is it five by two?
I don't know why he, I don't know why he said that, but.
Okay.
He says one point.
All right.
I think, I think he was saying two point seven, Nancy, I think when he started talking about it, he said, you know. He thought that was an overblown number, he thought it could definitely be less than one point five, but obviously. You know, nobody knows until we actually get the numbers.
Right.
For real, but he he thought the number he had figured out was overblown.
So, what we need to do, Rachel, you ever check into that budget number for, was there anything left in there on your account?
I talked to Brad about it and he thought there was, but then he went on vacation.
So, move any farther with Pete after.
We have to sign that.
We have to get a purchase.
I think we had.
We need to get.
You're correct.
That proposal has to get approved and signed by Dan, I think, right?
Right, but we, she thinks there's money left over from the park or rec budget.
From the, from the fifty thousand from how many years ago?
Yes.
I think we spent all that.
Or was there something from ARPA?
Well, so we have twenty thousand dollars that was approved by Board of Selectment, Board of Finance. In August of twenty. Twenty one, I think, six, twenty thousand dollars, and we haven't spent a dime of that.
So, I think, okay, that might what, I think that's that, that's what Brad said was less.
So, I agree, Dan, Dan here, that's what I've heard, is we have the twenty grand.
Yeah.
So, we, you know, and and we've been working on this project, which kind of surprised all of us, eleven years. And it's been, it's been put on the back burner, COVID changed things, the high school, the uh, um, the school projects. Put this in the back burner, the police station put this on the back burner, the farming arrange put this on the back burner.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the, we did the small section of the hallway, which came out really nice, so. You know, and and we, when when Peter said we've been working on this for eleven years, we kind of looked at each other, went, holy mackerel. Um, and you know, and you look at the very first renderings we had to what we have today, it it has changed a lot. And I think it's really become more practical, a lot more practical.
Well, and I think the tat, the needs of the town. And in the kind of programming has changed pretty drastically.
Yeah.
Um, not just Park and Rec, Senior Center, a lot of the different, that offer the kinds of programs that we would use the space for. And I know um at the Board of Selectment meeting, Tom Gallard was there, I couldn't see him, but I, then he started talking and realized he was there. And so I I think we wanna make sure is that by building homes and by. Like what certain needs, do we have enough showers and things like that?
Well, that was something that, again, we.
Yeah.
That we would have to talk to building officials, fire code, any requirements, if the front doors would have to be changed because of. Loading for egress, and that's something that Tom would have to give us those numbers.
Right.
So, you know, there there's a lot of things, but Peter's really not gonna do anything else, he gets a purchase order.
Well, he gets a retainer, not a purchase order, we don't do, the town doesn't do purchases. But we have to approve the proposal and. And then get that.
So.
Taking care of.
What other, what else was discussed, 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 discussed? Um, you know, we we talked at the meeting about this Gordian looking at the project and. Peter also recommended that we should talk to them to see if they could, are capable of doing a project like this. And had them take a look at it, cause he felt they may be go in there and tell you that you do not need to have a structural engineer come in to do things. Or you may not even have an ME engineer, you know, electrical engineer, so. That could save us a lot of money, they will tell you if we need it or not.
Yeah.
I I think.
If we don't need MEPF and stuff like that, then.
Well, so, the the structural mainly was um that that because. The way it was originally set up with the men's and women's locker rooms on that long plumbing wall and having to add more. Toilets, sinks.
Right.
Things that the floor was gonna get jackhammered up, and then um the hallway going in. So you gotta cut that hallway in, what are you moving, and that's the only kind of structural things that we really need to look at, when you start moving walls. Are they just walls that were added afterwards, or are they structural, so we have to make sure.
Yeah.
That's one of the maximizing walls, you're good.
Right.
That's why we need to get them to come in and.
The only question I have is if we're gonna hang that curtain, that sliding curtain wall, is that gonna be hanging, or is that gonna be on rollers?
I believe it'll be a roller.
Yeah, it would be like an automatic.
On track up above.
Yeah.
Manually the structural engineer.
To have, make sure it's.
Yes.
Yeah.
Should be a big deal.
Right, cause there's nothing above that, is there something, oh.
You're gonna need to go.
Is the north wing above that area?
No.
Of that, okay.
Yeah, but you're just gonna need something structurally, right, you're gonna need one heck of a beam to run across and hang that film, that's the only thing.
Again, there might be other types that we.
Oh, absolutely, no, that's why I asked, if there's a roller, if it was on its own roller.
That I don't.
They make.
So we didn't, we didn't get that deep into it.
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out there just in case.
But.
Be the only thing I can say.
So, you know.
I think the next order of business is to approve the uh proposal that Peter gave us, and so we can get that. Cause that, I think, I'm pretty sure you asked the kinds of questions of, is this proposal basically gonna get us? To where we need to be to take the next step, he's not doing, this isn't gonna get us complete plans, this is gonna get us more fleshing out the schematics.
Well, he kind of indicated to us, it's gonna be very, 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 very close to a complete.
Yeah.
Okay.
Awesome, cause we we emphasized, and Roy pushed it heavily, we want the soup to nuts, we we don't wanna keep coming back.
Right, right, right.
Because, you know, we we, we have one shot at this, it it, we need to get that cost, we need to get the project cost. So we can go to the Board of Selectment. And then hopefully we can get a a grant, state grant, um, or whatever, which way the, you know, Tom wants to to do this.
So he's saying that. Coming out of his proposal, we will get construction documents.
Yes.
For twenty thousand dollars.
He's, his, his work is done.
Okay.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
Uh, I just wanted, Rachel, was the back hallway included too? Cause it kind of goes off the the diagram, because that, we didn't, purposely didn't do that always, because we wanted that whole thing.
Correct, it would need new flooring.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be discussed.
I know he included the double door, and I think we had discussed that we were doing the flooring throughout. But I don't know if that was part of the overall number when he included it, I know we had talked about, we said the flooring was gonna be the same as we had put in the. Whole rest of the building so that there was consistency, I don't know if that was included in the pricing.
Okay, and we also talked to Peter about the 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 first bathrooms that were done, keeping the. The the pictures the same, the tile the same.
Style, everything, yeah.
Same, it's sort of, why reinvent the wheel, right, you have the specification, the information, so, and that's. Will make it a little bit easier too.
Right, okay.
Now, as as the that back hallway, w- was discussed about the windows back, the the actual exterior, we said, no. We didn't, we didn't mention the floor, but that's something that we could.
We can make sure that gets added in, cause I think that back window wall with the doors and everything is newer.
And it doesn't get hot like the the front, Nancy, because it's in that little alcove.
Yes.
So, we don't have heating or cooling issues there, like the front hallway.
Right, okay. Okay, all right, so. Do you need to, need to put up the proposal up on the screen, or do we need, everybody got it, so hopefully they read it, yeah, we're good with it? Okay, so I can make a motion that we accept the, let me see what it was called here. Proposal from Architect Guild. Uh, where'd it go? Date of July one, twenty twenty four. For architectural services. Specified for the municipal center locker room renovations and upgrades. How does that sound?
Sounds good to me.
Nice second, a second.
Is there an amount? Is there an amount?
Um, no, there's no amount. Um, oh, with a uh ten thousand dollar retainer.
Yes.
There's not an amount.
Yeah, ten thousand retainer, he he did say to us that, you know, his cost would be well under fifteen thousand total.
Okay.
But we need that first retainer amount.
Start, yeah.
Move to the next.
To move to the next level, which would then give us not construction drawings, but enough to see, do we need MEP?
Right.
Do we need an engineer?
Right.
To structural, do we need an MEP?
You'll have actually measurements on here and all you.
We have a second.
Yeah, just a moment, or get your ducks in a row.
Yeah.
And then, let's see what transpires.
Talks about the hourly fees at a retainer of ten thousand dollars, and I think that um. That would get us, it's more like schematics in a way, so we'll look at that. Um. We good?
Sounds good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, done, I will, if I don't, if I don't have a printed copy of it now, I will get a printed copy and. Bring that to Dan and that Gustavist, and um, at the first meeting that he would see about getting a retainer, but. That was working off the old proposal, which had. Signatures of people that we couldn't work with. So I think we're good to go with that, and then. We'll have to find out too, like, how do we coordinate the Gordian part, like, you know, when do we get them?
I think once we, Pete starts to do some things, maybe we can get Gordian to a meeting or meet them there to go through.
I think that's, I don't think I want him to come to this meeting, I think I'd better during the day, meet, come look at things.
Yeah.
They did look at the whole thing, but.
You have to call them first, and then you have to get in their computer system, and then then that's.
Yeah, because the the last time when they came to look at the lobby. I started getting, working on that, I think Eileen took them, like Jay, yes, the Gordian guy. Into the lockers and said, we're thinking of doing, and they were like, we need more information, so. Now we have more information, we can work with that.
So, all right, we could just to Pete, then.
Yes.
See when he comes up, contact them, and I know, I could, I think, well, we could as, like, certainly, exactly, Pete.
Yeah.
And I'm I'm sure Roy would too.
Right, so we'll have to see, um, and we could find out more, cause Kathy's used them a lot of things, on how we get into the. System to get, start looking, to start looking at things and how much information they need from Peter. To be able to figure out, like, where, what else do they need?
Mm-hmm.
So.
So, what I'll do. We get this proposal over to him and. Do the selectmen, Dan signs everything, I'll I'll get a hold of Peter next week, maybe Roy and I can meet with him again, and Rachel, you know.
Do, do we need to meet with him this quickly again, or?
Well.
Are we good?
I don't know, we might be good right now.
Yeah, I think it might be another little bit before they get um, before he gets enough stuff put together. For having Gordy to come, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
And I'm sure if he needs to come and check more things, I mean, he's got all the information he needs, but if he needs to come here, he's, he knows he can come in here and get into.
Yep.
He just let Rachel know and should take care of it, so. Anything else on this that we, I'm I, I'm excited about getting this done.
We gotta vote on this, I think. You vote on it? I'm so excited, I lost track.
We voted, we voted, so now, yeah, um, I think that's it for locker rooms, I don't think we have to do anything else. Right now, like I said, I'll print the stuff, get it to Dan, make sure that gets taken care of. And then, we're starting to kind of almost sort of wind down in a way in a lot of projects, I'm wondering if we're gonna need to meet every other week. But I think we might need to play it by ear, depending on, like, if bids come in for the high school and we need to be a part of getting that going, then.
Good night.
Thanks, Rachel.
Rachel, thank you. Yeah, maybe we could, you know, look, see how we look for next meeting.
Yeah, I don't really know. I haven't heard from Acton Target, so I don't know if they're, when they're gonna send an invoice or what.
It's surprising, because they busted our traps about getting prepaid before we did anything, and now you don't hear anything.
And I don't know whether they are waiting a period of time to make sure there aren't any questions or whatever, but I haven't heard of that. So, but I think that uh both ESC and CES may be waiting for the CO. Because there may be questions, et et cetera, um, coming from them, so. All right, so somehow we could scan this in and send it to everybody, that would be, or did Roy have one of these?
Yes.
So Dave Olson's the only one that does it.
I can scan it.
Can you?
Yeah.
All right, so maybe you can scan it, send it to Dave and anybody else who might need it.
John Purna too.
John Purna, yes, John Purna said he was coming, but he's not here, so. I don't, Dan, I don't know, Dan, if you're still there or you can talk. Echoing, but we just wondered if you had any prospects for another commission member.
Um. Unfortunately, that seat has to be a Republican, um, but we're also trying to find a couple of extras for the HVAC project.
Okay, what, do you think you'll appoint Tyler to be a part of it?
Can't appoint Tyler, charter doesn't allow somebody outside of the town.
These honest, that's why Libertini couldn't do it, yes, okay.
Yeah, lives in Shelton.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, and I, cause John was asking, and I, I know that you'll let me, or Mary will let me know once that happens, so. Um, anything, but. Um, anything, but.
I just scanned documents, my phone, I'll send it up.
Oh, okay. Cool, anything from anybody else on this, are we good?
I can make a motion adjourned.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, Rashawn, thank you, everybody, see you in, see you in August.
Okay, August, August.